Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners' Court. Today is Tuesday, August 27th, 2019, and we're here today for a special meeting. Actually, we have two special meetings. The first one is a public hearing on the tax rate and on the fiscal year 2020 county budget. At this time, all members of the court are present and the meeting is called to order. If anyone will please rise for the invitation by Ms. Shirley Cook, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today, first of all, to thank you for your meaning and blessings to us, who ask that you help us, the leaders of our county, as they go about the business of the county. Ask that you protect our men and women in you, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Item number three is to conduct the second public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate for the year 2019. We've had our first public meeting on August 21st. Just to, a short, a brief reiteration of that is that we set the proposed tax rate at .5800 as a court on July the 30th. On August the 13th, we set the two public hearings on the tax rate, and of course, this is the second public hearing on the tax rate. As a recap, the current tax rate for the year 2018 is .5850. I made the decision to lower the tax rate by half a cent to .5800 when figuring the proposed budget for fiscal year 20. And as we'll talk about here in just a moment, when we go to item number four, and everybody does have a copy of the draft fiscal year 2020 budget, but the proposed budget had a deficit of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and some odd dollars, and after making some adjustments, that budget is now balanced at a zero, or no money relied on the surplus funds to balance the budget. So, our first public hearing is online. If anybody would like to see all of the comments that were made regarding the tax rate, it's available online, and of course, I'll open the floor to any of the commissioners that might want to make any other comments regarding the tax rate of .5800 for the tax year 2019. Any comments from the court?
The only thing I've had, Judge, is I've had since our last hearing, requests from other county officials that we would stay at the 58.50.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have any comments from the audience, from the citizens who are here regarding the proposed tax rate of .5800? If you'll come up to the podium, identify yourself and make your comments. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. I'm Peggy Dorsec. I live in the Pinewood community. I'm here just as a concerned citizen. My concern is that, while I appreciate the court's desire to lower the tax rate, everyone wants to have a lower tax rate. My concern is that Hurricane Harvey wreaked havoc in our county, and in particular, in the local communities. The floodwaters eroded the ditches, there are deposits at the bottom of the ditches, vegetation has grown up at the bottom of the ditches, there's standing water in many of them, some of the culverts are partially blocked or totally blocked. That's an unusual expense, and I'm sure that's just one example of many unusual expenses across the county as a result of that terrible storm. And, as I said, I appreciate the efforts to keep the taxes low and to get rid of that deficit by hard work, shuffling things around, but I think this is not the time to lower the tax rate. I think you need to ensure that you have enough money to take care of the ongoing needs of the community, but also the special needs at this time. Are you open to suggestions on the budget itself now, or is it...
When we move to the next line item, yes, ma'am.
I'll have your comments then. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for your comment. As I said in the last public hearing, I believe that it was probably a mistake to lower the tax rate from .5850 to .5800. I also think that if we were to decide to go back up to the .5850, first of all, it would have to be voted on in a regular meeting, or we'd have to call a special meeting in order to do that and start back over with our tax hearings. And I believe that now that we've notified the citizens that we've lowered it a half a cent, it would be a bigger mistake to try to raise it back that half cent. However, any member of the court that would like to put that on a future agenda can do so, I'm not willing to do so. Any other comments regarding the tax rate?
Judge, I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
I agree with what you just said. I think it would, I think we actually made a mistake by lowering it also, but I think it would be a great, a greater mistake for us to, at this point, go back up. However, if you would look at it one way, we haven't lowered the tax rate. We filed a proposed tax rate. I think that, like you said, I'm not sure how the statute reads or what the regulations are. I think that we have, we wouldn't have to have two more hearings if we left the tax rate where it is, because we, we have to have two hearings on the tax rate itself, and that's what we've done, the one before and the one this one. But, I'm in agreeance with you, if we was to reverse now and go back, it wouldn't look too good, but that's my opinion on it.
My comments are, we have the hearings to hear from citizens, and we've heard this hearing and last hearing, the request not to. And then I think that, for me personally, I'm gonna have to pull my support for the 58, because all the requests I've had, either that I've listened to and hear, or in the community, is a request not to go up. I feel like I'd be voting against the citizens to adopt the 58 percent, or the 58 cents per hundred, and so I'm gonna withdraw my support to 58.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
I'm gonna keep mine at 58, because when people start getting these tax bills, they're not gonna pay a whole lot of attention to the tax rate. They're gonna see their tax bills have gone up because the appraisals have gone up, and they're gonna be paying more taxes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Roberts, any comments? Any other comments from the citizens on the, on the tax rate? I will move on to item number four, conduct public hearing to discuss adoption of the Hardin County budget for fiscal year 20, October 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2020. Again, everyone has the copy of the draft fiscal year 2020 budget for Hardin County. And then everybody should have a sheet attached to your agenda that talks about the changes that were made. Angela will read off each of those changes when we go to adopt the budget on September the 10th. Hopefully, that's the date that we'll still adopt the budget. But you do have a list of all those changes attached to your agenda now, I believe, let's make sure. Yes. So you will see what all of the increases and decreases are over in the far right-hand column. Most of the changes that were made were to revenue line items. What I did was Angela and Candace made sure that all of the revenue was up to date as of July 31st, 2019. I went through and looked at the history for the past three years for each of the revenue line items, and as you'll see, some of those had to be decreased, but I was able to increase a few of them, and the two largest increases were on the county clerk fees, an increase of forty thousand dollars in revenue, and then, I believe, the other one was on interest earned. It has to do with the interest that's earned on our investment funds, that Ms. McWilliams does such an excellent job on investing. However, she did caution me not to increase that too much, because she's not sure if it is going to continue to be as successful as it has been in the past, but I did make the increase on the interest earned line item of twenty-three thousand and sixty-five dollars. Those are the two largest increases on revenue. We also had one decrease on the dispatcher. The sheriff had requested an additional dispatcher in his budget, and that is a, an expense that is spread among Hardin County and five other entities that pay for that dispatcher. He had two of the entities that balked about the increase, and therefore, he withdrew his request, and we discussed that previously in a previous meeting. So that is one decrease, and a total decrease on that expense was eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. With all of that said, as I mentioned earlier, and you can see it in the revised tax summary for 2019, the total proposed budget revenue is twenty-three million, four hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred and nine dollars, and the total proposed budget expenditures is twenty-three, twenty-three million, four hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred and nine dollars, and the fiscal year 2020 budget does not rely on any surplus funds to balance the budget, it is balanced as is. There are two expenditures that I wanted to include in the fiscal year 2020 budget that I was not able to because of the, the revenue's not there, and that is to meet at least some of the requests by the technology department to replace several computers that need to be replaced before January 2020. Has to do with Windows 7 no longer being supported, and trying to get those computers replaced with Windows 10 operating systems, and as well as a server in the sheriff's office that needs to be replaced for the same reason. Those will not be able to happen because the revenue is not there unless we move some money around after the first of the year, or I guess we could also do it before the budget is adopted. And then I had also wanted to add at least some money to each of the Road and Bridge accounts if we could, or Road and Bridge departments, because of the decrease that Road and Bridge has taken over the previous years, and we mentioned that earlier, in an earlier meeting, but I think that that started sometime in 2009 or 2010 and lasted five to six years, where Road and Bridge took large hits on their budgets, and I wanted to try to put some of that funding back in. So those are two goals that I had for the fiscal year 2020 budget that I was unable to meet. However, I still think that we have a sound budget that will provide the citizens with the services that they're used to expecting, and we might be able to continue to complete some of the remodeling in the courthouse. The large courtroom upstairs on the second floor is the goal this year. We took care of this courtroom this year, and we were able to do that with some funding from the probation department, as well as some insurance funds that we got from the Harvey disaster, and then surplus funds that we had left over in the jury fund. I hope to kind of continue to do the same thing next year, remodel the large courtroom on the second floor, using the same type of revenue. With all of that said, I don't think I missed anything, but if there are any comments regarding the fiscal year 2020 budget, I'd open it to the commissioners first. I appreciate you putting it together.
Thank you, you've done a good job.
That's what I was gonna say, Judge, you've done an excellent job. I know I've already stated in open meetings that I will be opposing this budget, and the other day, in, in our last meeting, Mr. Pelt was referring to the legislator up there about being in the minority and making a grandstand vote, and I certainly didn't take that where he was pointing that toward me, but it made me stop and think, I am in the minority as far as opposing this budget, but it definitely isn't any type of grandstand. I just feel that my constituents won't be to make the right vote for the, for the citizens, and I feel like some of these things that we've added in this budget is gonna come back to haunt us next year, because we are, I mean, we already went through this with the tax rate, talking about the rollback, but we're gonna have to make cuts next year. And I think some of these is gonna come back to haunt us, but I do appreciate you and Angela putting this together, y'all worked hard on it, and I think it looks great.
And I'd just like to echo that, with the collection percentages being down, not getting that information until yesterday, that's quarter million dollars plus, reducing to 58 is a hundred and sixty thousand, it's gonna put us close to four hundred thousand that we won't be able to rely on with the cuts that we've taken, and the mounting tasks that are ahead of us, one point eight million in courthouse expenses that are gonna have to take place. I know drainage is a big issue. Our constituents expect us to respond. I know that not everybody on this court digs ditches, three quarters of us do, and I think it's important that we continue that, and so at this time, I'm just gonna say that I'm, I'm not committing to vote for or against the budget, but I'm rethinking everything based on the information we received yesterday and the fact that we are going from 58.50 to 58. I don't think it's healthy, personally, although I do respect and appreciate y'all putting the budget together. I just think if we're gonna have the hearings and not listen to the citizens, why have the hearings?
And Commissioner, as I said earlier, there's five of us that can put an item on the agenda. I'm not willing to do so, but if you'd like to, please put it on the agenda, and we'll take another vote on the, on the, we will vote on the tax rate on September the 10th, but if we'd like to vote on a different tax rate before then, we can set a special meeting or whatever, whatever needs to happen in order to do that. I'm not the only one that puts items on the agenda.
I understand, but the support's not here, so I'm not gonna put it on the agenda, because I already know the support's not here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, I'd like to just address one thing Chris said, I agree with, with what he's, his position, but I wouldn't want the public to get the mistaken idea that cutting the tax rate a half a cent is directed at drainage. Road and bridge funds are not drainage funds, and this is what the public doesn't understand. Hardin County does not have a drainage district to collect a separate tax for drainage, like Jefferson County does. Road and bridge funds are basically for road and bridge, and we don't have near enough of them and never will in this, in this county, because we turned in a report in June that showed, my report showed, we need about additional five million dollars to put our roads in good shape. Chris is what I think, seven million. There's no way to come up with those funds, but if the citizens of Hardin County want drainage, the citizens are gonna have to initiate a petition to call an election for a drainage district and collect a separate tax. We looked at this years ago, the court cannot call this election. The court cannot institute this tax. Only the citizens of Hardin County can. And when this was looked at a number of years ago, and we got an advisory group to give us an estimate of how much tax this would have to be, initially, it would have to be something like twenty cents a hundred to get the capital cost to do the drainage work needed to start a drainage district. And the only drainage district that's ever been put up in Hardin County was an act of the legislature, a specialized district, and it failed at some, at that time, something like eighty-two to eighteen, and it was just restricted to the area that was affected by drainage, the pineal and biosystem. So, I'd be the first to admit that we need drainage funds, but this court cannot raise drainage funds, and we certainly can't do it through the road and bridge. So, any, any belief that the tax rate of Hardin County is going to kill drainage projects is not true. If the citizens want drainage, they've gotta get a drainage district. Thank you, Judge.
And I would just like to add, since Harvey, I've had at least four citizens, two of those are prominent citizens, or at least citizens that are known throughout the county, have told me that they would have a petition to this court within weeks, months, or what have you. We're now exactly two years past Harvey, and no petition has been brought to this court, which tells me that if they can't get the signatures for a petition, it's never gonna pass. However, maybe the wrong person's working on, on getting a petition together, but just to, just to add on to what Commissioner Pelt said, I agree, we need a drainage district in order to improve and maintain drainage in Hardin County, and until we have that, it's not gonna get fixed. Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, on, on the part of the drainage district, and, and I'm, I'm probably in the, unlike Commissioner Pelt, we, we have the two worst parts of the county as far as drainage, where the water comes. I know that the majority of the people in Hardin County do not flood, they're not gonna vote for a drainage district. And when Commissioner Pelt said that about raising, it was, back then, it was twenty cents for one hundred, that's not true anymore. When we talked to, to some other people, it was, it was closer to fifty cents, which is almost as much as what our county tax rate is. So, if you're looking to double the county tax rate, that would be bringing in a drainage district. Unfortunately, we're not like Jefferson County, where we have a lot of refineries and, and businesses that can afford to help with that drainage district problem, so we have to do what we have to do. But, I, I, I know Ken said it was eighty-something to whatever I saw, it was actually ninety, ninety-two, I think, ninety-two to eight was the last vote on a drainage district. When you have ninety-two percent of the county voting against a drainage district, it's not gonna roll, it's not gonna change. So, I, I, I think that's just the way it stands and, and what we have to deal with. We all deal with it in different ways, in different parts of our county, and our different, our, our different areas. In my precinct, I, I try to do the best I can with the drainage. I can't do any major drainage, but right now, we're, that's why we're working with the GLO on, on that money and getting that drainage money in and trying to fix some of the drainage from Harvey that was caused by Harvey, and also improving the drainage. So, there are other ways of getting the money, and I think that, and what was, was it eleven point eight million on the GLO money?
That's for infrastructure, right?
And, and that's for infrastructure, and that's for some of the drainage. And we have been looking at all this, we have a drainage committee, we, we've figured out the areas that needed the worst and what we can do about them, and actually, I sat down with the judge the other day and talked about one specific area, but we're, it was just the way that we have to roll. We have to figure, we have to go around some of the other obstacles that the county with the drainage district does not have to go around, but if you look at the counties with drainage districts, they're not a Hardin County. There are Harris County, there are Jefferson County, they're, they're big counties that have lots of money coming in, revenue coming in from, say, refineries, et cetera, that's the, being a bedroom county like we are, bedroom community as I call it, it's just not, it's not feasible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kirkendall, you want to add something?
Yes, sir. I agree with the drainage district, a lot of the problems on the creeks and the valleys would require drainage district. However, my comments are primarily for bar ditches and outfall ditches, and equipment and staff to meet those needs. I believe it is a responsibility of the commissioner to dig the ditches, unclog the culverts, and have the outfalls cleared where the water can drain and get off. We have, we do have jurisdiction of three hundred feet off of a major, off of a county road, and I think it's important that we provide that service to our residents. I know, since I've been in the office, we've spent a lot of time, we bought a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar piece of equipment to upgrade so that we could, we bought new dump trucks so that we could haul the dirt, we bought a culvert cleaning machine. This year, we've been able to unclog many culverts in less time than the old-fashioned way we used to do it. So when I talk about the citizens calling us and wanting us to respond, it is to dig ditches. I'm coming up on, you know, ditches that haven't been dug in thirty years, culverts that have silted in where the culvert's eighty-five to ninety percent full. I do think that is the commissioner's responsibility to dig those ditches, unclog those culverts so that water can drain, and by doing that, we've been able to improve at some point the drainage in precinct two. I'm proud of that, something I ran on when we first ran, something we continue to do. However, it ties up a minimum of four people, and forty-five percent of the infrastructure, that's, that's a large part of my staff, and they have to have salaries, time off, have to have equipment to do that, and we have to have schedules. This whole month, we've been working Fridays because it's not raining, to try to catch up from all the rain we had the first part of the year, so qualifying my statements on drainage, I'm not referring to creeks and valleys and things like that, I'm talking about the ditches along our roads, the culverts along our driveways, and the outfall ditches that were required by statute to service, and just to qualify my statement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments from the public regarding the 2020 fiscal year budget? Yes, ma'am, come on in. Good morning again.
Good morning again. So, I am not a lawyer, and this code is extremely complicated, as I'm sure you all know, as is the budget, but it was my understanding that the county was also responsible for the ditches along the roads, and also ditches that might have been cut to take the ditches along the road to a major outfall to get the water out of the community, and those absolutely do need maintaining and fixing at this point. I also want to thank the court for its efforts in getting money from FEMA and from other sources to improve the drainage in our communities. I know that's a lot of hard work, and it's a very competitive process, and I think it's done a lot for the community. I would also request that funds be allocated in the budget, and I don't, I can't understand how it is allocated, but that funds be allocated to maintain those projects that have been done to improve drainage in our communities. If they're not maintained, all the good that was done goes away, and if the properties flood again, then you know the property values go way down. If the property values go way down, then the taxes will have to go up even more. So I think it's important, even under these situations where, you know, we have less money than, than we maybe need, because costs are always going up, to take care of those things which are putting our county at risk and will overall benefit everyone, because as I said, if property values go down, rates have to go up, and no one wants the rates to go up. Thank you.
If I could respond to that, I don't know if you've been to previous meetings on drainage and everything, but what you just said is a major issue that we brought up several times about during Rita Ri, they did clean some of these drainages out, they were not maintained, and that's the reason why we're back here, so that's a very good point you had, but just like Mr. Pelt said, we cannot allocate money to, to maintain those. Like Mr. Kirkendall said, yes, we can do the bar ditches and three hundred feet, but as far as us allocating money to, to maintain that and it needs, the only way to do it's have a drainage district. We, we're limited by law to allocate money to do that, so we can't.
But, in some cases, a commitment was made to maintain these projects.
Yes, it has to be through a drainage district. We, we got, we got federal money to do it initially, or they did, I wasn't on the court at the time, but there was no money that was allocated to keep them, to maintain it from them.
So, if I may suggest, perhaps money could be allocated to buy the equipment that would be appropriate for maintaining these places, and that could be used along roadside ditches as well. Everyone wants our community to flourish, no one wants the property values to go down. So, you know, you're able to find ways to get rid of a ninety thousand dollar deficit, maybe you can find ways to provide for the equipment and the personnel that would be required to maintain these projects that would be very, very beneficial for the community.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying, I agree with everything you say, but just as Chris mentioned, the equipment and the labor to do it, you're adding about five hundred thousand dollars to a commissioner's budget. That's not gonna happen, that's two cents on the tax rate. It, it's just not gonna happen.
I don't know how much it would cost, five hundred thousand cents?
Well, I, I know how much it would cost, because I deal with it every day, and, you know, we try to do the best we can. I've set my priorities at the top of the road, keep the roads mowed, and do all the ditch work I can. But I've got a hundred and ninety miles of road, over fifty-two percent of Hardin County, and unfortunately, I have probably as many subdivisions, or maybe more subdivisions, than any, any commissioner in, on this precinct, and the housing density is such that, you know, the roads require more maintenance inside those subdivisions, but I've also got lots of other people that I have to serve.
I understand.
And I would like to, and like in Pinewood here, I guess it's been ten, twelve years ago, we spent over three hundred thousand dollars to clean every ditch in Pinewood, unfortunately. We had hurricanes and Hurricane Harvey since then, and went in and tore all the ditches up, and we applied to the federal government to give money to remedy that, got zero. I just spent three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to sand seal every road in Pinewood, nine point something miles, less than a year later, Harvey came and ruined it all, the federal government did not give a penny to help out on it, and I can't take three hundred thousand dollars out of my budget, you know, at this time. It takes a long time to save up that money. We would, every commissioner on this court would like the, the roads to be better, the ditches be better, and everything to be better, but it's a matter of how much the people are willing to pay in taxes.
I understand your, I appreciate your comments. All I'm asking is that the court consider putting money towards drainage which will help improve the entire county, because it will help to prevent raising taxes higher if the property values decrease.
This court does consider, we consider it every time.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments regarding the fiscal year 20 budget?
Move it to her.
Second.
I have motion back to Commissioner Cooper, and a second... I have motion back to Commissioner Cooper and a second back to Commissioner Pelt to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The first meeting is adjourned. We'll be right on to the second meeting.